I think we can, might as well get started. Welcome, everybody, to Planning Board Meeting tonight. This is, I would say, our fourth session that we have had some outside experts come and speak with us about various aspects of housing. And we appreciate the last three meetings that we've had, starting with the RPC. And then, what was our second one?
Sandwich.
Was somebody from the town of Sandwich, New Hampshire. They received a Housing Opportunity Grant, and that allowed them to do some work with an outside consultant. And as a result of that, they changed some of their zoning this past spring that allows many of the things that Lime has already allowed as it pertains to accessory dwelling units. And then, so, tonight, we have two different viewpoints being presented. Jonah Richard is here, which I will allow Tim to introduce him. And then, we also have...
Jamie Rogers.
Jamie Rogers, sorry, from the Margaret Pratt community up in Bradford. And so, go ahead, Tim, why don't you introduce Jonah a little bit?
Okay.
I think if we'll, we'll try to keep this within forty-five minutes or so to allow us the time to be able to spend some time with Jamie as well.
Right. So, Jonah, correct me if I'm wrong, but Jonah has been buying buildings in Fairleigh and Bradford, generally more rundown buildings, and turning them into housing, redoing them and turning them into housing. So, and getting grant, and getting funded for doing various grants and things. Yeah, so we just want to hear about it, I guess.
So, I guess the floor is yours. If you could maybe tell us a little bit about some of the successes you've had, some of the challenges, I think, are what we're looking for. Yeah, if you want to come up to the table and...
Yeah.
Kind of put a loop here.
Yeah, so, my name's Jonah Richard. Small-scale real estate developer is kind of how I classify it. Also have a construction company, which helps keep costs down on the development side. But we're focused, like Tim said, in Fairleigh and Bradford, a little bit in Orford, but primarily northern upper valley, for the most part. We've done a couple of projects over the past couple of years. Next to Chapman's, we did where Sunnyside Coffee is, which is a nineteen-unit mixed-use building. We just finished up a six-unit affordable housing project in Bradford. We're doing a test for-sale model in Bradford, trying to gear it towards workforce housing. So coming over the model where we can build a for-sale home for a couple making, two income earners making twenty-five dollars an hour is the goal without subsidy. We're working on a nineteen-unit, like, true affordable housing, light tech, housing tax credit project in Fairleigh that's in pre-development. Also working on a thirty-unit mixed-use project in Fairleigh.
Wow.
Where the old Colby block was burned down, I don't know, ten, fifteen years ago, and it's just been this vacant eyesore in the center of town for, since it burned. And then, another proj, we got a lot of projects. So, we're just working on a fifteen-unit for-sale. Mentioned we're working on this single-family home concept. If that works, we have a fifteen-unit for-sale housing project lined up to move forward with that.
So, for-sale means that people just buy the units?
Yeah, so, I mean, this whole started as rental housing, and there's definitely demand for that. But part of this is figuring out a way to promote homeownership and allowing residents to build equity in their own houses, which is a lot harder to do than rental. There's, funding's a lot harder to get. The market, it's difficult to hit your target cost per square foot when you're building in order to sell it effectively as a workforce housing project. So there's some additional challenges that come, at least that we've seen with for-sale housing, but it's something that we drastically need, so, working a lot on that.
Where do you stand with your tax, that tax issue? And your block, you were talking about the taxes that you owed.
Yeah, so, so, as of, most, most grant funds go towards nonprofit housing developers. There was a slew of funding that came out of COVID through federal ARPA program, and they opened that up to for-profit developers like our company. And we were lucky, we got, you know, we were awarded a million dollars, over a million dollars in grants for one of our projects, which, as, you know, a smaller developer without, you know, a huge back office staff, we didn't have sophisticated attorneys or accountants on our team at the time. We accepted the grants and spent them on our project, assuming that, you know, there would be no tax, income tax implications because you're spending all of your grant income on, on construction costs. But that's, turns out that's not the case, and you can't offset it. So we were left with this massive half-million-dollar tax bill, so we're working...
They give you a million and take half of it back.
Yeah, you spend the, they give you the million, and you spend the million on construction costs, and then you have to pay a million, half a million back.
Back, yeah.
So that was, that was eye-opening. You know, it's part, most of it's federal income taxes, a good portion is state income taxes. So we went, it's been a saga for the past six months trying to figure out how to navigate that. And we ultimately ended up getting some support from VHFA, Vermont Housing Finance Agency. They came in and gave us some low-income debt to basically refinance the project after it's complete and to pay off the tax liability. So it's, I mean, it's not ideal either way, right? You're still paying a monthly payment on that for thirty years, but, you know, at least you get to stay afloat. So there's, trying to, trying to find a solution.
So, I mean, talk about the things that are critical for this kind of small-scale development. How do you know if a project pencils? How do you, you know, how do you, what are your barriers? What kinds of things do you have to worry about?
I would say mostly funding and construction costs. I mean, a big piece of it, we're lucky in Fairleigh, we have town leadership that's extremely supportive, select board mainly, I mean, planning commission and DRB follow zoning rules and the town plan. So they're a little less, you know, able to get, I think, creative with supporting development. But the select board has been extremely helpful, both in terms of strategizing new projects, thinking through how we can get them through zoning effectively, writing letters of support for our grant applications. Even for one of the projects we're working on now, we established a semi-public-private partnership where we're applying for a community block grant, which is federal funding available to any municipality. The town or nonprofit has to be a recipient, but you can partner with private developers. And that's a huge source of capital, a million dollars, up to a million dollars, for affordable housing projects. So we were able to establish the partnership, and we're working towards getting funding for that project. So that's, we're really lucky to have that. I mean, the big hurdle is it comes down to capital finding, first, getting a project that pencils construction-wise, so that comes down to either your hard costs, your soft costs, which are, you can do value engineering and tricks to cut those down. But it also comes down to land costs, how much you pay per acre, rebuildable acre, and that can vary drastically depending on where you're building.
It seems like so far, you've bought older buildings that are in pretty bad shape and then redone them pretty much, right?
Yeah, I mean, mostly. Five oh one, next to Chapman's, I would consider that mostly new construction because we tore the building down and built new. We are getting into more, like, development of raw land, but primarily, it's all focused on infill projects in the village center.
Right.
You know, I don't, we're not, I'm not interested in going beyond the village center limits and kind of promoting sprawl, tracks, subdivisions, whatever. I think it's important to build up, you know, our downtown village center area.
Yeah, and Fairleigh, Fairleigh has enough, or quite a few of those, it seems like.
What, sprawl?
No, the buildings that you can redo in, infill, yeah.
Yeah, there are. And, you know, we did, the old Evans Gas Station across from Chapman's, now is sitting vacant for ten years. We've turned that into a usable retail space that's occupied now. Yeah, there's, there's a ton of opportunity just along Main Street. I mean, a big, a big hurdle, you know, now we're kind of realizing is minimum lot sizes. I don't know how you, you guys deal with that in your zoning, but minimum lot sizes.
Lot, right.
So you have your setback requirements, which are also, can be cumbersome in a village center, like having ten, fifteen-foot setbacks, I don't know how, depending on the location, how much sense that makes. But minimum lot sizes is, is a battle. I mean, we have, at five oh one, next to Chapman's, we have this parcel of land that's vacant, it's attached to the property, but we can't do anything with it because it's, we can't, it's too small to subdivide based on town, you know, zoning requirements, so.
What are, for, curious, I'm just curious, what are the minimum lot sizes in the, in the center of the...
I think it's half acre, yeah.
What is lawn?
One acre.
One.
One acre. In the lawn company.
So, so, in that area there, I think you have town water. Do you also have town sewer?
You don't, no, so, but when you go to apply for your septic with the state, they'll impose their own restriction. I don't, I don't think you need some artificial minimum lot size to tell you you can't build it. The state's going to come in even more, like, with even more scrutiny and tell you whether or not you can fit a septic on your site.
But you've been, I mean, you mentioned a nineteen unit and a thirty unit. Those are, you're going to be developing a septic system?
Oh, yeah.
Private septic system that'll sustain those?
Oh, yeah, it takes a lot of space.
Yeah.
That's a big waste of space.
Yeah. It's necessarily a waste of space if you're...
Just way smarter.
Sorry, that's what most people do, yeah. Oh, but, you know, the town's looking at community septic options, I think, which is really, you know, that would do a lot, right? If you're able to eliminate the need for these, these, especially along Main Street, these, like, mixed-use buildings, you can really start to build those up. Especially since Fairleigh is really cramped. You know, it's, you're bored by the Connecticut River and the, and the rail on one side, and then the Palisades on the other. So it's not like you can really build your village center out.
Which one was the Colby block?
Across from Chapman's.
Oh, okay, that whole thing.
Where Wings used to...
Oh, yeah. You remember when that burned? Oh, yeah. It was like twenty years ago, I think. Yeah.
Uh, might be twenty now.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, it was...
Started with a cigarette.
Right.
Yep, wind blew the ash up into the eaves and started the eaves. From one of the apartments up above.
So, Johnny, you rattled off a bunch of techie terms that I've heard of, but it would be interesting to have you expand on them. You spoke of hard, soft, soft costs, land costs, obviously, is, but can you talk more about what, what goes into hard and soft costs?
Soft costs are anything like engineering, architecture, permitting. Hard cost, it's basically everything that's not hard cost. Hard cost are your, like, construction costs onsite, your framing, your concrete, your demolition, your...
Labor, I presume?
Yeah, all the labor associated with it, like, labor materials associated with physically building the end products. And then, soft costs is everything that kind of wraps around that. Design, design and architecture primarily. Or design and engineering.
Right. Do you give a ballpark number that you use for percentages for a project? You have a three-million-dollar project.
Three hundred a square foot. And that is, like, very rough, very rough. And that's, that would include all of your, could include all of your hard and soft costs, but not your land.
That's less than what Twin Pines was telling us. Twin Pines would feel like coming more like four hundred.
Yeah, when you introduce, you know, Twin Pines' business model is, they use the low-income housing tax credits and probably for, at least the majority, if not all, of their projects. And so, we're doing our first, we're applying for our first light tech, it's called, project. And that comes with a whole slew of additional requirements. So you're doing additional environmental work, you're doing, you know, we had to, we had to spend fifteen thousand dollars on an archaeological study where they came in, this, like, specialty company from New York sifted through our gravel. And, yeah, didn't find anything, so.
Another thing that Twin Pines does is they, they pre-fund all of their capital improvements because this is affordable housing, and it's sometimes, it's subsidized, and sometimes, they're not getting, not always getting a lot of rent, maybe not a great rent. They just say, great, we're going to have this big capital reserve fund to replace the roof and the furnace and all this stuff, and we're going to pre-fund that. That's why Andrew Winder said, yeah, I'm going to say the number four hundred a square foot.
That's what we're coming in at for our, for our light tech project.
Yeah, and then, and that, that's going to shock you, but here's why. Because we've got all these, we already put all this money into these capital funds upfront. So, so to have you say three hundred, you're not eating all those upfront costs. But, yeah, that, I mean, that's what it costs these days.
Yeah. We have to pay for a consultant, a specialty consultant to come on fifty thousand dollars. You have, you know, Coen Resnick, a national accounting firm that charges a thousand dollars an hour, that you'd have to help prepare your, all of your agreements. It just, it's a lot more cumbersome.
Yeah. What, in, what is your sense? You, it sounds like you dipped your toe in the water in Orford.
We're dipping our toes.
Yes, I was just wondering if you could tell him, tell us a little bit about the state difference.
From what I understand, we haven't gotten to, we're looking at buying properties, essentially acquiring some properties. But there's no zoning in Orford, first of all, so they, that, they're going to, someone's going to come in and they're going to learn their lesson pretty quickly if they're going to be zoning. Not me, I'll, you know, but I know there's people sniffing around that, oh, won't get into it. But there's not as much funding in New Hampshire. You know, Vermont has, like, these grant funds through the state that I don't, New Hampshire just doesn't have. You still have the same federal funds available, your block grants, your home funds, your tax credits. But you don't have, like, the same type of workforce housing debt programs that Vermont has, or Vermont has the V HIP, Vermont Housing Improvement Program. I don't, you don't really have, you don't see that in New Hampshire. The fund, the funding isn't as robust.
Right. Unfortunately, the way things are right now in New Hampshire, it sounds like it's going to get worse rather than better as far as any money. Yeah.
Your rents are going to be higher, though, in, in Fairleigh. So, I mean, you can build more market rate or workforce housing without, you know, you don't need as much subsidy presumably, because...
So you can charge more in Orford?
Yeah.
Why do you say that? The higher income on the New Hampshire side?
Yeah.
People don't have to pay income tax, so you choose New Hampshire.
Yeah, the demographics, at least from what I understand, are a little different. So you can, you know, it's easy to capture the Darby Hitchcock or Darby Health employees in, in New Hampshire. Every, most, you know, most of those people want, don't want to live on the Vermont side because they're going to pay their six percent income tax.
Yeah.
Can you take advantage of designs that others have done? Like, is there, you know, a set out there of people who have done housing in different locations that you can just, you could, might be able to steal?
Yeah, you can. I mean, there, there are sites where you can purchase pre, you know, pre-made architectural plans. And we've looked into that, but the trick is trying to fit them to your site. And that might work if you're doing, like, you know, you have, like, a five-acre lot and you're just going to plop a bunch of houses. But if you're, if you're doing, like, mixed-use infill, all of those are super custom. You gotta, you know, you have, you're working with weird lots, sizes, different zone, you have to have, like, a certain number of parkings, like, all these, like, nuanced things where you can't just plop a generic building down. And, and you might not even want to, right?
No, I was thinking more like of the Sears Roebuck style of, you used to be able to buy plans.
I don't, yeah, I've, I've heard of that.
You could buy the whole house.
You could buy the whole house.
Yeah.
But you could certainly buy plans.
Yeah, yeah, and some, like, homeowners will do that, right? Because we also, as part of the construction business, will, we build custom homes for people. And either, yeah, they come in with an architect, we have our own dress person in-house, or they, they come with a set of plans that they purchased online.
Tell us a little bit more about, so, are most of your units rental units? And you mentioned that you're doing some that are now going to be for sale. But, so, is your goal to, are you working mainly for affordable? Are your units affordable housing units because you've gotten these grants, or?
Trying to do a mix. I mean, it's, I don't want to just do strictly affordable housing. One, because there's, you know, scarcity of funds. But two, it's, you know, you need, you need a healthy mix of incomes in any community to thrive, right? So you need some on the higher end, some workforcey, some affordable. So it's kind of, every project's different.
Right.
But most of, all, all the projects that I have now are rentals. We're doing our first for-sale project right now.
So, the eight units next to Chapman's, is that, are there any affordable units there? Or is it all, I mean, how much do you, yeah, how much do you charge for those?
For the affordable ones?
Well, or just any, all of them in there?
Uh, I think they're nine hundred a month for the affordable ones, and then thirteen for the studio, the, yeah, the market rate studios.
And there are one bedroom or two?
Studios.
They're all, and that building is all, yeah.
We have, we have two one-bedrooms, sorry, we have two one-bedrooms, and I think the rents are sixteen hundred for those.
Okay. And then the other studios are less. So studio, yeah, pardon my ignorance, but studio means, what, just one big room?
You don't have an actual bedroom.
Yeah.
It's only just one open room.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have any trouble filling the units?
Nope, haven't. We have turnover naturally, but, yeah, it's usually, I mean, if, if it turns over in the winter, it's hard to fill, but, you know, we don't have any vacancies right now.
What, the, you said, was it thirty unit you were thinking about across the street? Mixed use? And what type of units?
Those were going to be mostly, we have, so we have, we have all the studios in one bedrooms at five oh one. We're building six more studio and one bedrooms behind Chapman's right now.
In the barn?
In the barn.
Thanks.
And so, we, we need some two bedrooms. So that's, that's what we're going to do. Two bed with office.
I should say, I do live in Fairleigh, so I'm...
Oh, okay.
That's why I'm curious, Johnny. I very much approve of what you're doing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that project's going to be, I mean, we, we don't have our full architectural plans yet, but two buildings. So, the idea is to kind of break it up versus doing this one gigantic building. So you do two with different designs that work well together, and then you have your parking in the back. And then, actually, we'll put the septic, because that lot is really small. It's, I think it's a quarter acre, or maybe a half acre. Something, not big enough to fit our two buildings parking in septic, so we're going to put septic behind Chapman's.
Really? So you just run it under the road and...
Yeah, you get a, there's a specialty subcontractor that comes in, will drill underneath the state highway there. And you pipe all the way back, and put your septic tank and your bleach field behind, yeah.
Big use of that back area, you can't subdivide.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So am I correct that, that has thirty units on those two buildings?
It will have roughly thirty.
I mean, that's the plan, that, something like that.
Including, including retail, so...
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, we don't know the number of retail spaces. I mean, what we found, at least, so we have Sunnyside Coffee in five oh one, which is tiny. You've probably been in. It's like four hundred square feet. But it's a way that, it's, it's extremely marketable to businesses that are just starting, that don't want to pay for two thousand, two thousand square feet of space. And you can make it really affordable, so it's low risk for them. And so we think that is going to be the model, or at least partially the model for this new project, is...
First step out of a food truck.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. You know, we need a, we need a, like, a non-pizza restaurant in Fairleigh. We have, are there a couple of other businesses that we're talking to? But, yeah, we, we lack a lot of, a lot of professional office space, for example, too, so.
Excuse me, that, there's a lot of retail space going away in Fairleigh. You know, we lost the, I'm trying to think of the building, a couple of buildings down. Where the fireworks place was, that became...
Where we have our office.
Oh, that's your office, okay. So that was all...
Oh, it was vacant for a long time.
Yeah, it was. And then, the building just north of you was third rail for...
Yeah, now it's residential.
Now that's all residential, and so bringing back some retail space is, I think, very important. I like the idea of having, you know, smaller, you know, spaces for, like I said, newer businesses that are starting up. That's a great idea to...
Yeah.
Keep that downtown vital.
Yeah.
How big is your company? How many employees do you think?
We have sixteen of us now.
Does that include the construction crew?
Yeah, that's mostly construction. We have, I have one development manager, and then the rest is on the construction side.
Do you sub out certain things?
Yeah, we, we, in-house, we have carpenters, a very good crew of carpenters, some project manager, a project, another project manager. We have an office manager, and then everything else we sub out. So painting, drywall, roofing, plumbing, electrical, yeah. Anything that's not framing or finished carpentry, we sub out.
Can you imagine, I mean, you, you know a little bit about Lime, I'm sure. Can you imagine anything that would help Lime to get more infill housing or something that's more...
I just need a person to build. That's, I mean, that's what it comes down to. You can modify your zoning, you can have all the incentives you want, but you need somebody that's going to build. And that's, like, that's what Fairleigh didn't have, that's, that's what most towns don't have, is somebody that's going to put, like, risk their own capital to build. So you have to find that person.
Yeah, I mean, land is expensive in Lime, I think that's one, one hurdle to get, you know, land is expensive. Because we have areas in the One and Com district that could be developed, but so far, well, Ray, Ray Clark did his thing, but otherwise, we haven't had anybody that's...
Yeah, you need, you need, you're going to need subsidy, someone's going to have to get subsidy for those. But, but your, your, your affordable housing in Lime and your affordable housing in Fairleigh are two different, are going to be two different levels, right? The affordable housing threshold in Fairleigh is going to be a lot lower than Lime, naturally, just because of the demographics, so.
So, I mean, another question on that thirty unit development there. Why so many units? I think I know.
Because you ultimately need some economy to scale to make these number, these projects pencil.
Yeah.
And, and that's a really key property in Fairleigh. Thirty units sounds like a lot, but these are two modestly sized three-story buildings. I mean, it's, they're mirroring what's over at Chapman's and five oh one effectively in terms of size. So, yeah, it sounds like a lot, but we, we surely need the housing. I mean, I think it's twenty units of housing, or twenty-two units of housing, and we have, like, eight retail spaces, or six retail spaces.
Right, it's not done, right. I mean, I think the thing that you said is the economy of scale, that you got a horizontal war under the, under the road, and then build a big bleach field over there. If you can get a lot of people to help pay... If you can get a lot of people to help pay for it, that makes, makes it a lot cheaper per unit.
Yeah, it's the same amount of work, right, from the developer's standpoint. It's gonna be the same amount of work to do a, like the six unit we did in, that we just wrapped up in Bradford. It's gonna be same, like relatively same amount of work going into the project. You got this, the construction is a lot more work, when you're talking about twenty unit or six unit. But as far as like the office work that goes into preparing that, they're not that much different.
So are you gonna have to do flat roofs if you do three-story?
No, we, we're not doing any more flat roofs in Fairleigh, yeah. I, I learned my lesson on that.
The New Jersey-ification of, you know?
Well, there are ways to do flat roofs well, I think, but I don't think I've accomplished that with five oh one.
But you were limited, because it's what, forty, forty-three feet height? Is that what it is in Fairleigh?
Forty is the max, yeah.
So you had, you didn't have any choice?
Yeah.
Because of the height, you needed the three floor, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's a little more modern than some people like to see. And I, I get that. But it, it's better than what was there. And it's, you know, you, they, I don't know, it's, it came out, I, I still think it was a success.
Well, it'd be nice if you don't have to do flat, you know, if you can do.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do, we got, you know, we can end up.
D twelve or nine twelve or something if you can do that.
We can push the forty foot limit. It, it's all about the fire department and how the ladder trucks that the fire department has, and how high, how tall they can reach. So, we, I think we, it sounds like, and talk to the fire department, we can push that potentially a little higher, as long as there's no livable square footage above whatever that threshold forty feet or whatever. So we can end up getting some more creative, you know, traditional gable, or, you know, whatever, maybe a mansard, I don't know, but, um, more traditional roof line.
Well, and you have sprinklers, they must like that.
But, yeah, I, I, I think I'd like to let some of the general public ask questions. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think to the point that you were just talking about, a, a lot of towns have within their zoning and, you know, construction approval process, they have design approval, right? And I know within the town of Lyme, aesthetic is huge, right? And when considering a multi-unit building, um, you know, the thirty unit that you're gonna be putting in across, and it's gonna match what is across without a flat roof, right?
Uh, in terms of size, not in terms of composition.
Okay. So what was, what was that process like for you, and were there any good lessons learned in going and really putting something in to that town? That was way more modern, you know, than, than what had been in there before? Um, it, you know, it's, it's something different. I think it looks great, um, you know, but also, you know, there's had to have been some pushback. Um, or some hurdles to go through.
We didn't get much, so surprisingly not going into it. I mean, it, we didn't get any pushback as part of the entitlement process.
Was there, was there a, uh, design approval? Do they have that in place in Fairleigh?
Yes, but I don't, it's probably not as stringent as what you guys have in Lyme. They have certain, you know, we got.
There's no designer approval here in Lyme, for, there's no architectural approval.
Yeah, there, there isn't. You go to Hartford, there is, you know, you, you build in Hartford.
Well, I'm saying, but in Lyme, there isn't.
But in Lyme, there isn't. But, you know, you put up a modern building in the middle of Lyme, you know, you're gonna have issues.
Yeah. So I mean, you got, you gotta be sensitive to what the community wants.
Yeah, so I just didn't know if there's any lessons learned going through that process.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think we would do that again.
Okay.
We would do a modern building again. I mean, I've, just personally, like, my, my tastes have changed too, so I don't, that's not really something that I wanna see.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I don't mind looking at that building. It's one building, and it has a great, you know, active coffee shop down below. But, yeah, I think the, the next one's gonna be more, you know, we're gonna have either clapboard siding, maybe some, some brick veneer, more traditional roof lines, like. But, yeah, I don't, you know, it, to some extent, you know, you can't, at least Fairleigh's zoning, they're not, they're not gonna mandate exactly what's gonna happen with the facade, right? There, you have to leave a lot of that to the developer to figure out. Um, yeah, or else it might not get built.
Yeah, I mean, my experience is that, you know, um, renderings are like the first step into getting everybody on board and in motion. And, you know, some places you need it, and some places you don't. And I just wasn't sure, you know, I'm unfamiliar with Fairleigh and what they require.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't do render, we had elevations. I, that is a good point. That is something we won't go into a hearing without again. Um, yeah. So, yeah, it's, renderings are a great thing to invest in. I mean, but renderings versus reality always, a lot of times.
Oh, there's always variation, yeah.
Yeah, they don't, they don't match up really well, so. But as much as you can, yeah, I agree. That is, as transparent as you can be upfront, I think the better.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to hear a little bit, if you have information about how your projects in Fairleigh, um, worked with the Rivendell School Board. Because if there are students coming into the community, then, um, there's gonna be a tax implication. And I realize that Rivendell, like Dresden, is a complicated interstate tax structure. But many of us sitting in this room have been at many meetings in Lyme, where they're like, oh, we'd love to have X, Y, or Z, your housing, but what's gonna bring kids, and oh my god, our taxes are gonna go up. So, did you have, I don't know, face-to-face meetings with the Rivendell Board, or, I don't know, community input from Fairleigh to say this, if we have, I don't know, thirty units coming in? And fifteen new students to the Rivendell District, is, is what it's gonna mean for people's tax bill? Can you talk at all about that?
Yeah, so we, we don't have one-on-one meetings with the school district. We have public hearings as part of the entitlement process, which is normal. But as part of these projects, you know, your, your property tax, your educational property taxes is going way up, right? So presumably that should be, you know, to, that's gonna cover any additional burden that's, that's gonna come with more students, right?
So, the, the, the property tax structure and, and school tax structure is different in Vermont.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out. I mean, I realize Fairleigh is not handover, but.
Yeah, Fairleigh actually pays more in educational tax than they receive back from the state.
Sure. It's a sending, sending district.
Yes, exactly. And so, you know, as part of your tax bill, there is an educational part of your, or your property tax bill, there is an educational portion, so.
Roughly two-third, I mean, it's the majority of your tax bill.
Sure. Vermont took a nasty pile of hits this year.
It did, it did.
I was gonna say, Lynn, I think, my understanding is that Rivendell has lost a lot of students in the last twenty years. So they actually are okay, I think, with having more kids coming, you know, it won't be a burden. And Lyme, of course, is unique, really, of most towns, because everybody's trying to get their kids in a Lyme school. Sure. And I talked to John Dontrumont last summer about how many kids, and he, he said that Lyme could add maybe thirty kids. Without a big. Without a big. Snafu. Yeah, it was not a huge, if they were distributed somewhat evenly in the, around the grades. That's a big yes. So we're, Lyme is really unique in that sense, cause of many, most schools are losing kids. Sure, sure. But we're, we're staying the same or even, I guess, so. Sure. We're, we're really different than. I agree with you on that.
I mean, Rivendell closed their middle school because they just didn't have enough students.
Right.
And that's been closed for quite a few years now.
I just didn't know, I was just curious about sort of the ripple effect. I mean, I'm totally supportive of what you're doing. And I would love to see things infill, or whatever the right word is, in Lyme, if there were appropriate properties, or derelict housing, or, I don't know, whatever. But I'm also hearing the, what? Students coming to Lyme? Oh my gosh, it's gonna cost that much more money.
Yeah, surprise, we've, we've gotten, we've gotten other kinds of pushback. That's never been something I've heard in any of our public hearings.
Well, it's a different situation. If you're losing students and people are, for whatever reasons, dying to get their kids into Lyme.
Right.
You know, I don't know, whatever. But, thank you. One quick question. I've heard affordable and also workforce housing. Are you planning any affordable senior housing?
Oh, that's a great question. We have looked briefly into it, but we haven't, we have no projects that are, um, but it's something, I mean, we need that too, so it's, yeah.
Do you build accessible units?
Yeah, it's, that's normal, um, code, so, you know, any unit, four units and above, you have to put at least one ADA apartment in each, uh, building. Five percent of units, but at least one.
Does that impose a burden on you as far as design is concerned?
You would think, but not, not, you know, beyond having to put a ramp in. You know, you have your, uh, accessible, you have your, like, wider doors perhaps, um, countertops are a little lower, bathrooms are a little bigger. But it's not, it doesn't add that much.
Do those have to be rented, um, to, uh, ADA?
That would be discrimination, yeah. You can't, you can't say you have to have some sort of disability to look at these.
And so in general, are those rented by, uh, disabled folks, or?
No.
No.
Uh, we try to market it as best as we can, but I think we've had one that's, you know, someone that actually could, you know, needs it.
Needs it, yeah. And tell us a little bit about, um, you know, energy efficiency and solar and, and, you know, green building, that, that sort of thing. How does that figure in, in what you're, what you're putting together?
Yeah, we do a lot with, uh, green building, um, everything that we do. I, I don't know anything about New Hampshire's state energy code, if they even, if you even have one, but Vermont has a, a pretty robust, um, state energy code. We always exceed it. Anytime you take grant funded from the state anyhow, there are additional requirements that come along with that. More, uh, R-value in your walls, and more insulation in your wall tatic. You're putting in high efficiency heat pumps, you're putting in mechanical ventilation, you're doing blower door testing to check for air leakage. So we've incorporated that, I mean, we incorporate that into the majority of our projects regardless now. No, nothing to do with sol- solar is, our utility company is Green Mountain Power, which is, uh, they claim to be eighty, eighty or ninety percent renewable. As it, I don't, I haven't fact-checked that, but, you know, in, the, the economics of trying to put solar on our small projects just isn't there. And if you already have a utility company that's providing a ton of renewable energy and only pushing further into that space, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to try and do that onsite.
Um, I think I read maybe one of your blog postings that said you, you had a choice between double pane and triple pane windows, and you just said, screw it. I'm gonna go to the triple pane because people are gonna save so much money. Am I remembering that right?
Yeah, we did that cost analysis on, it, it was, triple pane didn't end up being that much more, maybe it was like ten percent more of cost or something, I forget the exact numbers. Versus the same double pane manufacturer. So that, you know, you run the numbers on what your energy savings are, because windows are one of the highest sources of, uh, heat, heat loss, right, in a building. So even if you can get a little bit more, um, thermal insulation there, it goes a long way with, with, uh, your heating bill. So the five oh one project, which is, um, you know, we hit, we, efficiency Vermont's high performance track. We have three inches of rigid foam outside of our walls, so we have nine inches of insulation total. You can heat those apartments with, it's fifty dollars a month.
Two candles, right? Two candles and exhale. Do you use heat pumps? Is that what's in there?
Yeah, we, uh, most, actually, all of our projects use heat pumps as primary source.
Cool.
Well, I, I think we wanna get our next person in, but, um, does anybody in the audience have any other questions that you wanna ask Jonah?
Just what was the name of your company again?
Uh, Village Ventures is the development company.
Thank you. Good stuff, Donna. Glad to see you doing it.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Well, thank you for coming in and chatting with us.
Tell your parents, I said, oh.
We'll do, we'll do. See you guys.
Take care, thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, sure. Uh, so Jamie, uh, come on up. I, I actually met Jamie, uh, at the UV Thrives, uh, confederation in, uh, September, I guess. And, um, you were talking about Margaret Pratt Senior Housing, and I said, this group would be interested in hearing kind of the, the characteristics of the design of the building. Why you designed it the way that you did, um, certainly, if you can speak to barriers to putting this stuff in. That's kind of what we'd like to hear, so.
Sure. Um, so Margaret Pratt Community, we are, uh, forty-seven units. That building only has forty-seven apartments in it. Those are a combination of one and two-bedroom mixed-use rooms. Um, and they're true apartments too. So these are real apartments. You've got a bedroom, you've got a bathroom, you've got a living room with a little kitchenette in it, uh, with microwave and a fridge, and stuff like that. So these are not just like a nursing home room that you may think of. That was done primarily because we wanted really to get people to feel like they're at home. You know, we say, you're at home here, that's our logo, but that was the design of the board, but they wanted people to really be able to bring their stuff from home and still live their same lives. So the building was actually built in Canada. It was all modular construction. Um, and H.P. Cummings built the main kind of center areas that are wide open, they pinned into the ground. If you don't know where Margaret Pratt is, we are located on the top of a sand pit, uh, effectively by ninety-one in Bradford. The sand has all been dug out around us, so they did have to drill into the bedrock. And Dan Smith of H.P. Cummings says, if the building goes, it's all gonna go as one, um, because of how they drilled in. We're on a flat concrete slab that is thirty inches of concrete that we're on top of. It, they did an extra layer, uh, above and beyond what they needed to because of the way the interstate and the fault lines run. Um, there is a active pit that does blast right across from us. Martin's quarry is right there, they do blast. When I was in the job trailer, you would feel the blast go off in the building. Sometimes on the far end, people will say they feel it. Though I think we're pretty steady. The, each individual unit we have has its own private bathroom. So if you're in a two-bedroom, you're sharing your bathroom with one other person. And that ended up being something that was created and made cost-effective by the design of the building. Um, if you ever walk through our building, it seems like our hallways go like this, and they do, because this bathroom butts up against this bathroom. And so all of the bathrooms butt up against each other, and they kind of shut out to keep all of the plumbing right there. And that was one of the things that was done on purpose, because that is a huge cost. We do have overly generously sized apartments. They are four hundred and forty square feet and six hundred and ten square feet. It, that doesn't sound like much potentially, but a lot of small homes that are going around are six hundred square feet. So these are designed for people to have some space, not be overwhelmed, you're not hosting a family. Sometimes you can. My grandmother lived there, we had my birthday there last year. Um, it fit our small family. The bigger things within the building that added the cost are all of the ADA, every single apartment, every single bathroom, community bathroom, dining room. Every walkway is all ADA compliant. So we have handrails, um, the bathroom pull rails, chairs, all of that stuff had to be incorporated into the design of the building.
How many floors, claws?
Just two floors.
Two floors, two. So there are lifts?
There is a very large generously sized elevator. I, that is one of the pieces of advice I give to people, um, when, I've toured other groups that have come through. Having a giant elevator is a really great idea for this population, cause you need to fit a stretcher, and you need at least two MTS and EMTs in that elevator. And sometimes that doesn't happen in places. Um, some of these old places that were retrofitted, where we were purpose-built. And I hear that a lot from the EMTs themselves, but that is a really great thing. Also, just moving furniture is a lot easier when you have a big elevator. That was purpose-built though, because a bigger elevator is a less fearful space, and our population is known to be fearful.
How, how big is the whole building?
I do not know the square footage. I, that's a really interesting, hey Jenna, let's just, let me remember that, cause I actually don't know what square footage on the entire building is.
Well, it's prob, yeah. Forty-seven units sums an average of five hundred, so, plus, plus all the hall.
Plus all the common spaces and living room.
So it's pretty big, yeah.
Yeah, um, the building was built in Canada as a modular construction project after being, and this is prior to me joining. Margaret Pratt Community was started in nineteen ninety-eight, and we opened our doors in twenty eighteen. So let that give you hope. So let that give you hope, that you guys can change things and bring housing and bring community development, because it did take them twenty years. The construction in the modular was created because it was the quickest way to get things done for construction season, for a building that big in the state of Vermont. And with our winter limitations, it also came, and I remember these, this is where I walked into the building, it had just been kind of put together. It came with the plumbing, it came with the electrical, so it was like a big Lego set that you literally plugged and played together. And out of the forty, there's forty nine units that came from Canada. There was only one spot in the entire building where they didn't exactly line up, because this construction company knows their stuff so well.
So is it, is it age restricted?
It is age restricted by, because of our license by the state of Vermont, you have to be fifty five or older to move in.
And, and it's singles and couples?
It is, combination of singles and couples. We, the financial side of that was brought to fruition because the land was given to us by George and Hazel Pratt. And then, uh, Harriet Peterson Pratt ended up giving a large sum of money so that we could get magic grants. And that really spun up the area. Getting the land was obviously a huge piece of that.
So it's independent living with the common food?
It's assisted living, which is a little bit different. Um, and in the state of Vermont, assisted living means that you help, you offer them assistance with all, uh, ADLs, which is daily living. So we're helping you get dressed, we're helping you take your medication, we help you shower, we help you get you food, um, and, uh, toileting and incontinence stuff is the other piece of that in state Vermont.
So is it, is it sort of a dining room?
So we do, so you can, uh, our building, it, as you can see, there's that big long space. What you can't see necessarily from, you know, Route two, is there's another wing. If you hop on the interstate, you can see that there's a wing, and it really is just a big giant T. The three wings are all apartments, and the center unit downstairs is the dining room. The center room above that is the living room. And that's where all of our activities, it's a multipurpose room, there's a full kitchen up there, um, for residents to utilize. Because in the state of Vermont, for our type of license, you have to have full kitchen space available. We actually have two full kitchens, uh, that's more than we need for what our license holds. The whole building, I only have a license for forty nine people in it, so. And some people have, we have less sometimes, because people want their own apartments and they have two bedroom apartments to themselves. But each, each space has to be u- designed specifically for this population too. So if we wanna create a salon, that's great, you still need the poles, you still need the grab bars. We do have a salon onsite, um, and all of that, because it makes sense for our population to not have to go out. So we try to keep them in and make their lives as easy as possible in the building. I know a huge barrier, and this is way before me, but this is the twenty year process, is Act two fifty in the state of Vermont. They put this big building, uh, which we are considered commercial residential because of our business, into a residential neighborhood. Which they fought, the neighbors are the ones that fought tooth and nail, to the point there is still one gentleman who does not want us there. Um, and I do understand, that was a, that was just a wild land, you know, people had this great space, they could ride their dirt bikes up there. I don't let the neighbor ride their dirt bike through our backyard anymore, we have a legal problem actually currently because of this. It's a lovely neighborhood for the most part, uh, it's up behind us. It's plateau acres, if anybody's been up there, it's retirees and it's young families picking up. So we walk in their neighborhood and they ride their bikes to our front yard, and nobody cares. Everybody's respectful of each other for the most part. But the, our two fifty barrier still haunts us to this day, because that, there's a requirement that lights, outdoor lights not be lit past a certain time and not be pa- lit past a certain wattage. Well, I have a third shift that comes in at eleven o'clock every night. So we worked, the way we worked around that between, um, you know, health, occupational health safety for our staff, is our lights go dim and then they're motion, and they are allowed to go up, but they have to stay on a timer. So then they have to be qu- willing to go back down after a certain amount of time. And that was a programming problem really, but they figured it out.
What are your rents?
So we are a nonprofit, so we have two different rent sets. We have private pay rents for one bedroom apartments, are all inclusive, and those start at seventy six ninety five a month. But that includes your wifi, your telephone, three meals a day, restaurant style too, so that's different than some places. All the, all of your utilities are included, and all the assistance is included. And then two bedroom apartments for a single person, I think are, start at like ninety five hundred dollars. Second person occupancy, you know, if I wanna bring my spouse in with me, the first person's rent stays the same, the second person is fifteen hundred dollars extra. But because we're a nonprofit, and that was what Dr. Barton really wanted us to be, we also work with the state of Vermont, uh, long term Medicaid program. Yes, New Hampshire has a Vermont, has a long term Medicaid program, it is vastly different than the state of Vermont's. One of our board members at the time was Senator Jane Kitchell out of, uh, I believe she's out of Cabot or Danville area, that she's out of that district. Um, she joined our board, um, to help bring the nonprofit to fruition. She is just stepping off, she's changed up all of her duties at the state level, and she's just resigned as of this week actually. Because she wants to move on to more local things, is what I'm being told. But she was a huge champion for us at the state level for the Vermont Medicaid reimbursements. Those apartments, your room and board is eight hundred fifty seven dollars and thirteen cents. And then it goes based on what your income is, and the state of Vermont tells you and me what you're gonna pay rent. Basically, it boils down to about eighty five percent of low income residents, the social security. And it, I mean, I don't know if you guys have looked at any of the other numbers, I, sometimes people hear we say seventy six ninety five, and they think, oh my god, I can never afford that, well, go look in Hanover. Because you're not gonna get anything in a four digit number, unless you're sharing with a couple of people with a bathroom down the hallway.
Do you have a memory unit?
We do, so we do have a specialty care seventeen person memory care neighborhood. Um, it is a secure neighborhood, the cost to build that unit was a lot more expensive. We work with Alanco, who's a local company luckily, um, so that our maglock systems are there. But then your doors still have to be fire safety. So that is an interesting way to, your residents are your biggest challenge with that, because it has to say on it that if you hold this door for thirty seconds, it will release. Fortunately, memory care rotations don't usually put pressure for thirty full seconds and hold it. You or I, we all could do that to get out of the building safely, but that does become a more cumbersome issue. Those apartments are set up drastically different for that neighborhood and for that cognition level. They're all set up as split level units. State of Vermont classifies them as apartments, but they are bedrooms. So the bedrooms and those units are, I think, three hundred and something square feet. And they're really much more like what you would think of a nursing home, like an old fashioned style nursing home, a big room. However, you have a wall down the middle. So there's still, the illusion of privacy is how I sell it, um, but you really do, if your bedroom's over in this corner, my bed's over in this corner, you really do have privacy, and at that cognition level, if I can't see you, you don't exist. So snoring is a bigger problem with roommates and that one. Uh, but those bathrooms are set up specialty too, uh, because of that population. So each, instead of having one bathroom, they actually have two, one is a toilet and a sink, and one is a shower and a sink. And all of the ADA compliance that goes along with that. The parking lot is based on, the state of Vermont tells you how many people you have to, you have to give them average employment numbers and average residency, and then they give you the math on how many parking spots you have to have. We could use more parking actually, during the winter it gets pretty crowded. Interestingly enough, our population right now has more cars than we have ever had in the six years we've been open. And every single year, we get more cars. The building is obviously a brand new building, so it's wireless throughout. We have more people using the wireless now too, and I would all, I have other buildings that I work with, and that is a huge piece that I tell people, you've gotta get wireless for your entire building.
So a couple can have two cars?
Yep, we actually have a couple who have two cars, a cat and a dog. And they live right there with us.
Any indoor, any indoor mark?
No, we have no indoor storage either, other than your apartment. So there, there are some interesting opportunities, uh, we have. And there's been things that, I mean, this was a purpose built building, and we have already changed the purpose, because you can do renderings, you can do layouts, you can do, you know, many things, but when you're actually in the space, using the space, doesn't work the way you thought it was going to. I don't know who thought about putting, um, a refrigerator in an under counter cabinet space, but that's a great way to tip over an older person who has really bad balance. So a lot of those get pulled out and put up on a shelf. So then there's an awkward space.
Do you have a sense of how much it costs per square foot to build?
That I do not have. I tried to ask our board for a couple of numbers, and I didn't get anything back yet. They would admit, so, so, mistake there. I do know that's why they went with the modular, that because after looking at local building costs versus modular. Dan Smith of H P Cummings was our lead G C on the building, and he is actually now on our board, he sits on our board. Which has been really handy if things have gone wrong in the building, or your water mains flood in the middle of February, and you lose your entire memory care unit.
So do you, does Bradford have water and sewer?
Yep, we're on town water, we have our own septic, but we are on town water. I would like to not do that, and I would like to have our own water source, but that wasn't an option where we were at. Just because of the water pressure pushing the building, the water pressure to get into the building is a lot. And then the water pressure, I, I have tried to shower myself in the building before. The water pressure through the entire building isn't good, and there's no, we've put boosters on it, but there's nothing else we can do because of the long lines.
Because you're on town water.
We are on town water.
How much, is it a lot of turnover or?
For help or residency?
Both, I guess.
Um, so by our nature of working with the elderly, there's always an expectation of turnover with the residences. We do have a waitlist, uh, currently, my main job is sales and marketing director, so, um, I do hold a waitlist. Being that we are a Vermont state Medicaid building, I could fill that entire building three times over just with Medicaid residents from our local area. But to be a company that's gonna make some money and be able to pay fair wages, uh, you, we do have private pays in there as well, so there is that mixed use there. But it's a very interesting group for that. Unfortunately, yeah, so we do, uh, trying to think, but we average about five turnovers a year. However, I will say we have lost more this year than ever before, and this is probably our new normal, simply because we moved in some people who were just young, and they just wanted to take advantage of being a Margaret Pratt. The private pay people are really the ones that stay longer, because by nature of being on Vermont long term Medicaid, you have to be nursing home level of care. To be in that program and get those reimbursements on your behalf, you have to need the actual care. We are not a nursing home, but unless you need heavy duty nursing, we can do all the other stuff. So the private pe- pay people last a lot longer on average, just because they're healthier when they move in. Long term care insurance people also have seemed to last longer.
Is it hard to staff it?
That has been the bigger challenge versus finding residents is finding staff for the building. Especially when COVID hit, so we had, uh, what, fourteen months under our belt, and a pandemic hits you, um, that's targeting the elderly when we first found out about it. So yeah, that was a real interesting challenge. I had never worked in this industry before. That was the biggest time, staffing up the building, we had no problem staffing up the building. And because we moved in eight people the first weekend, we didn't really need that many people. But if we were gonna hit our finance goals, we needed to have people waiting to come to us. So we actually overhired a little bit, um, we made some promises, and by the end of January, we actually had, uh, like almost thirty people living in the building. Building filled up way faster than it was supposed to. And I think that a mixed finance building would do the same thing no matter where you are. Because I worked with Peggy Gusha Atkinson, I worked with Dylan Valleyview, we used to work with the other places in Bradford that closed. Everybody's full, everybody's got a waitlist. I mean, I will recommend people to the terrorist communities, I recommend them to us. It's a very interesting industry, there's no, there's one property in the entire area that doesn't necessarily play nice with the rest of us. The rest of us are all just, who can get, you know, Betty in, who's got room? And we actually have groups meetings together and we'll share that information.
So is workforce housing a problem?
Big time, so that's why I love what Jonah is doing, because those are the one bedroom rents that my staff can afford, you know, and still save money to be able to buy a house down the road. But that was a big thing when all of a sudden Dartmouth Hitchcock raised their rent rates, five dollars an hour overnight. A lot of these young kids are chasing the money, why not, you know? And we did, we started as a startup nonprofit, so our rates for pay have also drastically increased, uh, because we had to, just to stay competitive. And that was a big reason why our rents had to go up. So the, some of these apartments have gone up two thousand dollars in six years. Granted, our introductory rates were obviously to fill the building and everything. But I have one lady who moved in originally, and when her, when she moves out, her apartment will be at three thousand dollars more than what she is current, because pay.
So you can't raise, well, well, somebody's there, you can't raise it?
So we do, we do a yearly rate increase, um, you have, the state of Vermont has ruled you have to give them at least a thirty day notice, and they have to sign off on it. Or you have to start eviction process, yeah. So if they sign off on it, you, you, you know, we've tried to keep them between three and five percent, and the only year we went five percent was during COVID. Because we're paying for P P E, and the cost of us just was drastically huge. We got a box from Ford of face shields, and we priced that up, that would've cost us twenty five hundred dollars, and they sent it to us for free. And we use those face shields. That, the, the medical side is a huge cost of our business, and that side of it. I mean, labor is our biggest cost, obviously, medical supplies and food are our other ones. We do serve restaurant style food though, we don't have just, if, you know, a kitchen line, you come through it, we serve restaurant style. So somebody is waiting on you, you're choosing off a menu what you want. And because of our mission being nonprofit and supporting other local businesses, we also are shopping at Pearson's and at Four Corners and at Roby Farms and at Newmont, and we're trying to really support our local purveyors. The nice thing about that is that when they've got stuff that they've gotta go, I mean, Bob Gray really believes in our mission at Four Corners, he will call us up and say, listen, I got a bunch of squashes, you're gonna have to serve them tomorrow, but they gotta go, come get them. And Chef Norma says, be there in five minutes, and, you know, we pay some, but he gives us the rest for free. And just working with local schools and partnerships like this has really added to helping us not spend quite as much money.
What is the impact, um, of this bit, the, this campus on the, um, the taxes in the town? Do you, do you pay?
We pay full market taxes. Yeah, so the towns saw a huge increase to their bottom tax line when we came on, because previously that had been a high land that George was paying an agricultural tax on. So there was a huge increase. In the state of Vermont, you can apply to pay a nonprofit tax rate. The board at the time of our opening did not feel it was even appropriate to ask for that, because it jumped through some hoops to get to us, to be in fruition of just being able to be built. There's been some talk if we should go back to the town and ask for a lower tax rate. But I think at this point, we still wanna be that responsible citizen, um.
Do you know what the facilities are assessed at?
I do not. I did at one point, and I don't anymore, that number would escape me right now, of course. But it is something that we've talked about, but going back to that mission of we're not there, we wanna pay fair wages, have a fair place to live that's safe, and be a citizen of our town. You know, we use the town library, we still go, we go down to the town library, we use the resources. We go to Elizabeth Park, we go to the Bradford Academy to go to the Historical Society. But we also try to be good citizens, right now we're doing a huge food drive. We've done that every year for the, and, you know, the residents participate in that, the families participate in that. You know, last year I think we had boxes at three other businesses, because they said, hey, I'd said, if you wanna box and- I'd said, if you want a box and we'll pick it up, but you'll host a box, let us know. And so there was a couple that got scattered around and, you know, maybe we create a couple extra pounds of food for the food shelter in town.
Does any of our public have?
Yeah, I just had a question about the land donation. I mean Pratt is an old Bradford name. Um am I understanding correctly that had that land not been donated, that perhaps Margaret Pratt uh facility would never have been built?
So.
Because of the donation?
It was the big game changer. That's what everybody said. So they had tried to buy the property where Valley Vista is now. And that was not anything that they could, the board could afford. Cause the board raised some money and just kept trying to raise money to buy something. Um and they kept getting stopped and started. And that's actually kind of when the state of Vermont stepped in and said, listen, you can be a nonprofit, but you gotta do something. So um Dr. Barton, the dentist, is actually the brainchild behind this whole thing. He was friends with George. Um I, I heard a lot of rumors about how it came to be. Um but in the end, you know, we ended up with that land and that was the game changer because they didn't have to spend that money on the land.
Sure.
That they were able to continue to see more. They, the project wasn't supposed to be as big at the very inception. It wasn't gonna be as big. Um was what I've been told. And then because we had the land and then again scot, cost of scale.
Right. How big a parcel is it?
The parcel itself is just under an acre. We don't even have a full acre there.
Really?
Yep. And it's a weird space. It's very triangular. Um and you're on sand.
And you, and you put the septic in?
Yep. Oh yeah, you can tell where the septic is.
So something similar in law, I mean, I mean, uh, who knows, this is just pie in the sky, but somebody like a Mr. George Pratt would need to donate some land.
You know, and so we're not in the downtown area. A lot of.
Yeah, no, I'm here up on the hill.
Right. A so, a lot of assisted living communities are more based closer to towns. And that is one of the negatives. Certain people will come to the building and say, well, I really wanna be able to get to downtown. And yes, the transportation bus is right there. We have our own transportation ban, but we can't run you into town just because you wanna go to the bliss. Um some days we can. Um but we have to have more schedule.
Sure.
And that, that is one of the opportunities. I can see that something in town would be more attractive. But you guys have a lot of open farmland, driving in, I mean, I drove down Route ten. Uh we, we drove by a lot of open farmland and maybe just outside. Uh because one of the best reasons that I love where we are, and I'm not from here, I'm from Royalton, I'm a transplant to Newbury. Um the, the memories and the friendships and, you know, being on the lime green that morning, you know, your friends are here, right? So you wanna stay here and that's why Dr. Barton created it. When Brookside closed, his mom lost all of her friends at the end of her life and he thought that was terrible. So he wanted something with local ownership that was going to stay local. Um so I see all the hugs and, oh, I haven't seen you, you know, every, every little town has this when you, when you get together on the town green. Um and then bringing them back together when they're older, you know. I had two, it was just fate. I just put them together. I didn't know anything about it. I didn't know that Ruth and Betty used to ride to school together from, you know, the Chelsea Road. Um and, and I, I get goosebumps and I get teary because this is a small world. The older I get, the smaller it is and the more weird people have found each other again in our building. And it is just great to hear them talking about those times because they get a way bigger smile on their face. They can live easy in those times.
Oh, it looks like it's, I've not been, but coming off the interstate or whenever, it looks like a lovely facility.
And I mean, maybe you don't need that many units, but if you do, you know, if your mom lives there, it's easy to see your mom three times a week versus if she's living down at Kendall, how long, how often do you get down there? You know, if she's over at Wheelock Tears, how, you know, how do you get there? Um and that is a problem for people on the Medicaid program who come from further distances.
And how did, how did you get in tune with this Canadian um uh company that made this super duper into like Lego style building?
So they looked at a lot of, a lot of different local builders. Um it was somebody that H P Cummings had actually worked within the past uh for some of their bigger buildings that they had built and just looking at the cost effectiveness. And being in the short construction window. So construction broke ground for a picture opportunity in December of twenty seventeen uh because Dr. Barton had cancer and he was going to be passing. So they wanted that opportunity. Um he, he knew the building was gonna take and actually happen. I have wild carpet in my dining room and my living room. And if you knew Dr. Barton, oh, that was the one stamp he actually has on the building. Um so some pretty wild carpet. Um but then the construction actually happened in April of twenty eighteen and we opened our doors December thirteenth of twenty eighteen. So in that short window, they built that big building. Yeah. And for the most part, uh because of Vermont, uh it's very energy efficient. Each apartment has P TAC units in it, just like a hotel or anything. The interesting thing about that is actually they went a little bit overboard. So if you're in a two bedroom apartment, each room, all three of the rooms, the living room is in the middle and then the two bedrooms are on the side. Each unit has its own separate heat unit. So there are three different units, three different cable hookups, three different telephone hookups. Uh because everything is individualized to that room. So that was a lot of extra cost, the P TAC units.
I don't know what that means.
Those are like when you go to a hotel and they blow hot air or they blow air condit- or they blow cool air.
Like a mini split?
Kind of, yeah, but they're in a wall. They're the old fashioned mini splits probably.
Old, okay, okay, thank you.
That'd be the easiest way to say it, I think. Um interestingly enough, I built my house at the same time that building was being built. I bought triple pane Harveys. They put double pane Harveys in. He's right, triple panes way better. It's, it was just interesting. Um to that point, the windows are even a safety window. If you come up, we don't have like a normal fifty fifty split window. We have sixty twen- uh sixty forty windows and that's another fire safety that was built into the building because you can get in and out without, yeah, in and out easier. Not that I ever wanna evacuate my sweet little old ladies out of window, but we're also fired, uh we're a dependent place building. So there's fire doors, there's special compartmentalization built into the building.
Any other questions?
Do you, do you give tours?
I do. Um everybody, I mean, Rich has my email. You guys are more than welcome. I, I actually probably have some cards on it. Um yep, there it is. Um I'm more than happy to give tours through our building. I did tour, I think, a group of you guys a couple of years ago. Uh but I've done this for other groups. More than happy to show off our beautiful building. And you might run into some friends there that you didn't know were even there. That's happened before too.
Well, you know that Dr. Barton's X Y G Barton is our secretary.
Oh.
Well, for three hundred years, probably when you were there.
Oh, I didn't know that. I'm a transplant to the area. So that I think has been really special to me to learn some of these interpersonal relationships that different people have and, you know, I'll see, you know, your daughter come in and give him a huge hug. Well, oh, you were her high school teacher forever and, you know, and it's just really nice.
I'm sure she was there when you were there, Scott, right?
She was and, and he was my father's dentist.
Yep, well, there you go.
Yeah, and fortunately because Mrs. Munson lives in my building, I can't, one of my big sales pitches is I can guarantee you a dentist in town. Charlie or Munson.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely. Again, if there's any follow up questions, Rich knows how to get ahold of me. Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Housing is definitely something needed across the board.
Well. Very. Very interesting.
Oh, really? I, I like Dylan. I think he does a really good job.
I mean, it's easy. I mean, you know, you just design it to do that.
Well, that's why they could put the leak.
I know, I mean, the sand perks really fast.
You have to be careful you flush and you step back.
As I, my house is on ninety feet of gravel. And I, my septic system doesn't have a problem. It just.
One by one?
No, it's actually, it's too. Yeah, it uh you actually can perk too fast some ways. You have to put in.
Put something to slow it down.
The trade off between perking and treating. Clay does a great job on treating.
Doesn't go anywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Good to see you.
So David, I'm, I'm kinda curious. I, I would love to look at some of these tapes that we have, if we have them, just to kind of refresh my memory. I, I think it'd be interesting for us to try to take some time in a future meeting to kind of review some of the key points that we may have picked up on.
I think kind of a written kind of executive summary would be helpful.
Yeah, I'd like it.
If we just focus on.
Yeah.
Ideas.
Yeah, I mean, I think to a certain extent, I think we're, all the speakers were maybe preaching to the choir, but yeah, it would be good to, for us to kind of get a summary of what.
Well, something you can share with, with others.
Yeah, yeah. So um now I guess I would ask folks to, to think about that. And we can put that on a, a future meeting agenda.
It's on YouTube, isn't it?
It's, it is. And so um I'll, I'll have this tape up on uh on YouTube. Probably tonight. I'll send, I'll send all those links to David.
I can forward them out?
Yeah, that would be. And then, uh, yeah, I might ask you to post this meeting to that.
Yep.
Should I, I'll send you the link.
Send me the link again, because it's just easier to, because I can. So um I don't think I have anything else. Uh we've got our next meeting on the twelfth. Yep, which is the hotline adjustment, which I hope everyone has been looking at it.
I was in the.
Right, we've been thinking about it.
I was in the office the other day and it looked like you marked up, somebody had marked up one of those prints with cross hatches and then this and that. Am I, am I remembering that right or?
I, I might, I haven't marked anything up, but I've gone through it.
All right. No, then, then I must have allocated somebody else to print, but.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff right now for the, the skiway out. Yeah, okay.
What's happening at the skiway?
I, I don't, it's not part of what I've been doing, so I don't know what the.
It's called but.
I don't know, I have nothing.
I know they're paving the roads at the select board meeting today. We're talking about paving.
Yeah, they're gonna pave, they're gonna replace some of the culverts.
Yeah.
And so I think they were looking to make sure that everything was in the right jurisdictions.
It's interesting. I was at the skiway um a couple nights ago for that um Tenth Mountain Division film. I don't know if anybody saw the announcement for that. But it looks to me like, you know, they've done some work, you know, that we were aware of, that they got a bar, I guess, or something, but to me, it looked like they've kind of gone back to the future. I mean, it, it's it'll be interesting to see how it works because I, I couldn't tell exactly where they would have a cash register. And um yeah, it looked like they had less capacity to serve food than um than they've ever had. So.
Well, they were always contracting out the food service and having a hard time getting people to wanting to do it. So maybe they're just pulling way back.
But it, it really reminded me, I, I worked for um Bill Nichols as a kid when Nichols and, and Simoni did the concessions there. And it reminded me an awful lot, even though it was not a confined spec, confined little area where the, where the concessions were before, but it reminded me like, wow, there's not much capacity here.
So they're gonna pave the road in front of the skiway?
Yep, repave the area that's, I think they're gonna go a little bit further up.
Not this year.
No, not this year.
So the town, I hope the college is paying for some of that.
I think it's to maintain the the town road. I think they're having troubles beyond.
Oh, so it doesn't have to do with the skiway?
No.
It's not the parking lot?
No, right.
But we'll be, what has happened with um is there a site plan for the skiway? Like, how are they gonna deal with traffic?
Um the skiway was put in prior to um the board doing site plan reviews, so there is no full site plan. There's some areas, you know, that they've come back for site plans for, but not the, the parking.
When they built the new lodge, they must have.
Uh no, there, there was no site plan review for that.
It just seems to me that they've, that, that whoever put the guardrail up has um created a, a really so nice bottleneck there.
Yeah, I was at the, well, you were too. I was at the select board meeting.
Right.
But I didn't go for that. I was there for something else, but I just happened to be there when all the people came in to complain about the guardrail. And some of the people there were, all the people there were saying was actually gonna make the traffic worse, that guardrail. So then.
Yeah, because they're not gonna be able to park in the road. So they're losing parking because.
Yeah, but they were talking, anyway, they were talking something about flow, but the select board, or segment at that point said, well, we'll see what happens this winter and if it doesn't work, we'll just take it out or whatever. And in fact, there was a subsequent meeting um on the select board. I don't remember his name, but a fellow came from Dartmouth, a fairly senior person came from Dartmouth and the upshot of that meeting was we gotta talk more to each other. Let's, it got the tiniest bit testy. Now, I'm not nowhere near inappropriate, but it was each side kind of like this and then everybody agreed, well, wait, we got these things that we have to think about. We have to think about parking. There's some big deal with culverts under the roads and this and that and um so the town people should talk to Dartmouth engineers and figure out, okay, now what's gonna happen and how do we work this out? And it was, it was actually, I, I thought fairly properly resolved that they said, okay, we have these questions and we have these things that we gotta figure out and let's agree to meet and talk about it. And so you know, I think that may be well on the way to being solved. I think you're right, Tim, that town did say, let's see what happens this winter. Right. Well, the real problem is, I think people are realizing, the parking lot is not big enough. I mean, and it's not every weekend, obviously, but there's a few weekends. That's the whole problem. The parking lot isn't big enough. If the parking lot was bigger, there wouldn't have these issues. And that's the college's responsibility to make a parking lot. I mean, every other business in town has to have adequate parking, you know, we all do this stuff. So why shouldn't the college have adequate parking? It's just ridiculous. I can't believe the college didn't pay for part of that guardrail. I mean, that's just crazy. Why should the town pay?
Some companies, you know, those came from state money.
I know, but still, you know, but still taxpayers' money, you know.
It's interesting that there was no site plan review because the new lodge was finished in two thousand and one.
Yeah.
And there may have been some, but there was not a lot of.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, um a lot of these things are newer to the planning board and the planning board has learned over the years how to go about doing this. And so, you know, I think it's a, in the years past, um things may not have been done as well as they could have been or should have been. But out of just, people didn't know how.
Inexperience.
Inexperience. And so, you know, it, it's improving with time and.
Yeah, but that's the whole issue. The parking lot, if they make the parking lot bigger, it would solve.
And, you know, I, I know they sell tickets online and I don't believe they have a restriction of those tickets. So they could oversell the parking lot very easily.
Right. Yeah, because I was there one weekend last year, the kids were racing and we were there seeing some of the kids. And yeah, basically the parking lot was kind of overflowed until we paid. And, you know, and so, I mean, I think the other thing too is there were six days, I think. Adam Adams, I, Mark Adamsik came in to, to talk prior to the meeting with the, the other Dartmouth guy. And he said, yeah, it looks like there's between six and seven, uh my memory is six or seven days where it's really, really chock a block full. The race days, I mean, no kidding, on the weekends.
Yeah.
And um you know, that's certainly an opportunity for Dartmouth. Maybe they don't wanna make the parking lot any bigger, but it's certainly an opportunity for Dartmouth to figure out, okay, how do we manage the crowds, the parking, everything on those specific days? How do we manage the crowds, the parking, everything on those specific days? And, you know.
It's their responsibility, because the town should make.
Park around the green and bust them.
Yeah, right, but the town shouldn't have to pay for Sean to spending all these extra time and all the stuff out there.
Tenements.
Yeah.
Right.
They're used to this.
I mean, but, but it's, I think it's fair to say Dartmouth has a big role in solving this problem.
Yeah, well, duh, it's their skiway, I mean, come on. It's not that, I mean, we use it, but I understand politically, it's a little tough, 'cause the town uses, is so much benefit from the skiway. So I'm sure the select, the, don't wanna get in a real battle with Dartmouth, still, the Dartmouth, Dartmouth has the skiway. They've gotta, right, make it right, I mean, you know, it's crazy.
I, I think that, you know, the, the guardrails are, you know, just kind of impetus for getting that conversation going. You know, it, yeah, fortunately, it's a little extreme, but, um, there, there was a very, uh, discussing with the, the lower folks running the skiway. Um, there seemed to be a lot of, uh, people not wanting to talk. And so I think this kind of forced the issue, and I think that, you know, it, it's too bad it had to happen that way, but, you know.
I think they're having the NCAA championships there this year and. That'll, that'll be, hopefully, they'll have that figured out before they get that crap.
Geez, I'm gonna drive up there. People park all the way back to line center, they're turning their road.
Well, it'll be good, good business for the, the towing companies. I was gonna say, if they were wanting to buy a tow truck, it would be a good place. Well, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
So we'll see you on the twelfth.
Yes. Happy Thanksgiving, yes.
Renee, you'll be here on the twelfth.
I will be here on the twelfth.
Have they started working on the adult weeks?
Yes.
Yeah, hopefully, slowly, hopefully, slowly. Maybe down top the stand, trying not to rush.
And Tim would like to have a five-year construction period there.
So nice for us, I couldn't believe how it was hard. I mean, you don't realize how bad it is until you, until you don't have all that traffic.
I live on Shoestruck Road.
Yeah, that's true.
Don't talk to me.
Yeah, yeah, well, anyway, hopefully that, it'll take a long time to do it.
Well, I got your stuff that, uh.
I get the money.
Throwing, clapping, throwing money.
So do I risk, uh, you know, going across the, the bridge tomorrow morning?